Welcome to the Catholic Entrepreneurship and Design Experience Monthly Groundwork Session. Thank you for coming. This month, we'll be digging deeper into Module Six, The Business Model Canvas. Think of these groundwork sessions as our small group work session. If we could be together in person, you'd know those assembled here as colleagues who bring their knowledge and passion for learning to share and challenge each other. This group gathers to collaborate, share best practices, and challenge each other to not only improve how we deliver the seed material, but also to challenge the seed material itself to improve. We'll begin with a prayer, and then we'll get our hands in the mud and know that this work will bear great fruit in the lives of our students and ourselves. In the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Come, Holy Spirit, fill the hearts of your faithful and kindle in them the fire of your love. Send forth your spirit, and they shall be created, and you will renew the face of the earth. Lord, by the light of the Holy Spirit, you have taught the hearts of your faithful. In the same spirit, help us to relish what is right and always rejoice in your consolation. We ask this through Christ our Lord, amen. And we ask a special prayer of grace and mercy on the friends and family of the community of Frazati Catholic High School in Spring, Texas tonight. Our hearts are with them. We ask that you lift them up, Lord, and be with them and comfort them. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. All right. Kieran Roach, everybody, from Tucson, Arizona. He's got that Tucson accent. Welcome, sir. Thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having me.
So today, as I mentioned, this groundwork session is focused on the business model canvas used in Module Six. But really, the point of the BMC, you know, there's a ton of uses, a lot of value there. It's very well used in the milieu of entrepreneurship, entrepreneurship education, business startup. It's created by a company called Strategizer, and they offer all kinds of training on it. They've written a book about it, and then they've gone deeper and deeper and deeper. I was just checking their website to prepare for this session. I want to show it to you. But really, what BMC represents to me and what it represents to Seed is a deep practice in the virtue of prudence. So if you think about it, and you've probably seen the numbers, some wild statistics out there of businesses that fail, startups that fail, entrepreneurs that fall flat on their face. And I would postulate that there are a handful of reasons, only a few handfuls of reasons. And one of those is not practicing the virtue of prudence. And so tonight, the business model canvas will be our focus. And with the outcome being, we want to be practicing the virtue of prudence and decision-making, using tools like the BMC to make better decisions in our lives, more prudent decisions, and therefore more holy decisions, right? More free from sin, more practiced in our faith, more in line with the will of God. And so that's what we're going to do today. So open it up from the very beginning. When you think about the virtue of prudence, what comes to mind? This is open for anybody. Just jump right in.
I have just like, kind of like a cautious, but right decision.
Anybody else? Lise has a joiner with her. It's her daughter, Rachel. Rachel, thanks for joining us. We might just totally put you on blast just because, but feel free to jump in. When you think about prudence, or perhaps when you practice prudence.
I guess when I think of prudence, I think of like, making the right choices and not rushing into things.
That's wonderful. Yeah, yeah. And when that happens, what does that look like? Like, do you have to like hold yourself back to not rush into things? Is there like a physical like?
Yeah, probably involves self-control from what I understand.
That's excellent. Rebecca, you were going to say something.
Well, I'm holding myself back in a way because this is, prudence is my virtue I like to give lectures on. So, and it's not my night, so I'll hold back. But I was going to say that irrespective of, I have a little pet peeve because people tend to think of prudence as merely caution, and it's actually the virtue of action. But I won't get on that side, that little side piece. I'll just tell you that when I actually hear the word, what actually comes to mind is Saturday Night Live from the 90s, when Dana Carvey used to mimic George Bush Senior. And he would always say, wouldn't be prudent. And that's actually what I think of first, and then second.
At this juncture, right? Well, I'm curious. Now, this is a good thing. Like, will you share more about this? I've never thought of prudence as a virtue of action. Tell us more, if you would.
Well, it's just, there are, in spiritual theology, there are considered to be six or maybe eight, I've forgotten, elements of prudence. And most of us tend to focus on the ones that do have to do. It does, what Rachel said is not wrong in any way. That does require some forethought, you know, some relying on consulting experience. And so it often does require the self-control of not just running after, leaping after whatever passion happens to move us at the time. But many people, I think, make the mistake of thinking that it's passive and that it's a kind of extreme form of caution, where you don't move until you're sure that it's exactly right. And actually, prudence is the virtue that does the opposite, that encourages you to make a determination, to think it through certainly, but to determine, make a determination and act. And only a person who's brave enough to act has the virtue of prudence.
That's powerful. Yeah, that's a paradigm, I think, that would help lots and lots of young people. And thus, you know, I count that as a Rebecca bomb. I know you're not going to claim it as your own, but still, it counts as a Rebecca bomb, right?
It's not my own, but.
Yeah. Oh, and we have a fuzzy guest tonight. Hello, fuzzy guest. Yes, I see you. Oh, yes. Well, I think that's wonderful. And I think, you know, I have a friend who wrote a book, a business book, based on the Proverbs, the wisdom of Solomon. And he treats prudence like directly in the very beginning and kind of goes at this paradigm that we have around this idea of, you know, being a, don't be a prude, right? That that's in our society and our culture, it is a negative thing to be considered a prude, someone who, you know, is a stick in the mud or won't do these things. And it's used as like a social collateral to accuse someone of being a prude. But normally, that's when, you know, they want to do, they want to be bad and have you come with them or not, at least not rat them out. But it's so much more than that, as Rebecca pointed out. In fact, I wanted to share with you a couple of thoughts from, you know, obviously, when you look up cardinal virtue, prudence is most times listed first. And then I wanted to share with you, we had a lunch and learn, a wonderful lunch and learn with the folks and the former dean of the School of Business at the Bush School of Business, and has launched a new consulting company, helping companies to focus on virtues. Okay, and so I went on their website. So this is a database, a virtue database, and I was like, I'm going to go here. We had the gentleman that started this company on the lunch and learn with the Seoka Center a couple of months ago, and it was really enlightening, really powerful experience. And I can see where there's a lot of need for this kind of work. In fact, this actually came up, this database came up in our December Seed Facilitator Training as well. But I was, so I was like, I'm going to go check this out, right? And here we are, right reason applied to practice. I think that's exactly the point that Rebecca was making, right? It's not just about being prudent in that you're taking time, you're holding yourself back, you're discerning, you're asking questions, right? But it is practice. It is ultimately leads to action, skill and good judgment in the use of action. And then overcoming vice, right? So I think a lot of people in entrepreneurship like to think of themselves as, you know, idea people or to be an entrepreneur has everything to do with, like chasing your passion or your dreams. But pure unbridled passion will lead to suffering, no doubt. And this idea of doing, having some sort of a system, right? Like Rachel said, to kind of hold yourself back, to put things in checks and balances into place, and to go through a process that helps you make a good decision that leads to fruitful action, right? And it's interesting, right down here in the example, think carefully before making a decision. Any thoughts about that?
I think as it relates to strategy, you know, prudent applied to strategy is focusing on those things that you can execute, being deliberate about what you choose, and then measuring whether or not you're making progress so that you can adjust. So I think, you know, in terms, you know, coming up with a successful strategy, many times the challenge is deciding what not to do. And it's imprudent to try and do too many things that you don't have the resources to do or to try and accomplish too much. And so many times, the prudent thing to do is to focus on the few and exclude the many. So I think, you know, replied to, applied to strategy, being prudent is to discern those things are most important from whatever the perspective is, whether it's profit, et cetera, to implement, and then to not do things that aren't on that list. So where I think many times people get confused is there's a lot of good ideas and they want to do them all, and they try and do them all, and then it's imprudent because then you fail at all of them.
Well said, well said. David, what did you notice about that? What are your thoughts on prudence?
Well, you know, it's interesting, John, is that we had a speaker today, and I think I've referenced him before, a guy named Andy Rome, who's a, the co-director of the Marketing School at Loyola Marymount University. So he'd been in to speak to the students once before. And we're kind of at our, at the end of our first year here with my junior students. And so we've been really, you know, leaning in and talking about leadership. And today's was around creative leadership and one of the extra, you know, that Andy came in and spoke about. And he spoke about something that got me thinking, and when you brought up prudence, the term that he used that I really, it got me thinking kind of the rest of the afternoon on was clock speed. You know, in the business place, there's a high value placed on clock speed, the ability to digest information quickly and make a decision quickly. And it's almost the opposite of prudence in that, you know, things come at you rapid fire in the business space. In life, things come at you at rapid speed. And the ability for discernment or prudence oftentimes is challenged by the value we put on making a decision quickly and just getting it off our plate, so to speak, right? And in the business world, high value is put on clock speed, right? You know, this person doesn't have a good clock speed. He just, you know, he freezes or, you know, she just can't make a decision, right? And sometimes that can be mistaken for prudence, right? Sitting back and assessing a situation. So, you know, in our fast-paced world, how do we, how do we allow for prudence, right? How do we allow for discernment? How do we allow for thinking about something versus making that clock speed valued decision, right? Just boom. I don't know. It got me thinking.
There's a lot there. Anybody thoughts?
I think it's important to understand the organization and understand your strengths. So to focus on things that you're good at allows you to decide quicker. And I think understanding the implications of decisions in terms of what happens after you've made decisions and learning from those things allows you to make decisions quicker. So I think, you know, just like we talked early on about the motivational code and how you focus on your strengths and your top three, it's no different in an organization. You can make a decision quicker if it is related to your strengths. If your strength is sales and marketing and you're going to introduce a new product, and you don't have to think too long, if you've had a successful track record, you know the people you have. Whereas if it's something that's not related to a strength, it's a lot harder to make a decision. And sometimes it's not prudent to make a decision without understanding how you're going to implement it. And if it's not based on a strength and it speaks more to a weakness that your organization has, sometimes it's prudent to make sure that you know what you're going to do to do something maybe that you're not good at, something that's new to the organization. And so I think, you know, prudence in action as it relates to business is your clock speed can be really fast when you're speaking to something you're good at and you have strengths. It's not, you know, you kind of should have that spidey sense going off saying, no, we've never really launched a product successfully before, and the pitch is for us to launch this product. Eh, maybe we wouldn't be good at this. So that's kind of my thought related to it.
That's helpful. Kieran, you were going to mention something.
Yeah, I felt like, funny that you brought up every clock speed because I think, I think of, when you think, when you get, hear the comment, oh, that person acted prudently, it's always after the fact, and then they get given that kind of gloss. But what about that prudent decision in the rapid fire moment with that? And so you got me thinking, and together with Rebecca was saying that call to action to say, do you measure prudence based on what was known at that time versus after? And is that a better, like, the idea of like, where does the prudent fruit come in? Like, is it like, you measure it on the fruit or at the timing? That was actually the best decision at that time, but later, you can look back and say, oh, it wasn't prudent. But at the time, it was prudent, but maybe not later. So I think it's kind of like, that's what I, like, I feel like it's a cop-out. You could say someone felt, oh, you just weren't prudent enough. But really, they were. It got me thinking like that.
Given the inputs, yeah, yeah. While everyone else is thinking, because I want everybody to have a chance to sound off on this, I'm reminded of, like, in my pursuit of wisdom, right? As I'm, you know, 43 years old, a father of two, husband for 17 years. I want, I was told once, you're smart, you're not very wise. And I'm like, huh, what does it mean to be wise? And in my brief, you know, two years, three years' sense of studying this idea of wisdom, the one thing I can really suss out is that wisdom has so much to do with timing. It has so much to do with that right moment. It is applied knowledge at the right time. And wisdom normally is being, we see it in people that are patient because they know the right, you know, the right time will come, and it's not now, and they're, they know that. And so they rest in that, and they're able to, you know, use their wisdom to be, you know, practice the virtue of patience, to be, you know, virtuous in their prudence. And what David, what you mentioned, David, it's like, you know, listening to Luke's book, which came out today, shameless plug for Luke Burgess's book, I'm listening to it on Audible today. You know, we talk about how, you know, what we want to do or the decisions that we want to make, the clock speed, is because we live in this world that is so, becoming so algorithmic, right? The amount of information and knowledge that's out there, it's like, oh, I could just Google this. I need to make a decision. I need to choose a thing or a path or a product or a service. I just Google it. I go to Yelp. I have this algorithm that I follow to make this decision. And that is partly prudence. But so much of the time, especially in entrepreneurship, when you're involved in a startup, the problems that you're solving are not algorithmic. They're heuristic, meaning the solution is not clear. This is uncharted territory. There's no decision tree, which is just basically an algorithm. No one's been here and had to face this decision before. And that, I think, is when wisdom, prudence, you know, and also just a whole bunch of faith in God. And if what I'm doing is His will, then it will, I will make, even if I make the wrong decision, the right outcome will happen, right? Even if I make, as long as it's free of sins, I think that's a big piece of that. So anyway, that's what I was triggered, is that, you know, we're, clock speed is important if this is a known algorithm. Like, if I, if you're the guy in Rick's business of Kurtz Brothers who drives the tractor, right? And puts the load from the ground into the truck, there's kind of an algorithm there. It should take a certain amount of time, and we should know, and I'm kind of giving stuff away a little bit, Rick. But, but like, that's sort of algorithmic, right? You should have some clock speed there. It shouldn't take forever to decide to go start the tractor up and get things moving. But on the other side of things, like, if we're, you know, should we invest in Bitcoin? I don't know. Like, is that prudent? I don't know what, you know, and there's all those things that Rick talked about. So anyway, that's my musings. I would love to hear someone tie a bow on this before we move on. Open invitation.
Well, you reminded me of a word that I haven't used in a long time, but that I'm going to start using again, heuristic. I just.
heuristic?
Yeah.
Yeah. Everybody knows what an algorithm is. But what's the heuristic? Because it's the exact opposite, if that's possible.
I, I've forgotten about that word, and now it is back into my vocabulary. I like it.
Excellent, excellent. That's why we come to these things. That's your one takeaway, David. No, no, it has to be more than that. And, and what a great segue, unless there's anybody else that wants to share. Rachel and Lisa are having a great discussion. Is it prudent? What, if you're going to share, let's hear it, or save it. Because here's the thing, what a great segue. I think that, yes, Rachel, please.
Oh, you were just talking about the word, what word? Because I think one of us missed it.
heuristic.
Yeah, yeah, heuristic. To be prudent, right? To really get the practice of prudence, the virtue of prudence, I think what we need to do is we need to build algorithms for ourselves, right? And that, that takes a lot of courage, right? We have to have our own kind of internal algorithm that we send things down the decision tree. And one of them that I've picked up in my seven, well, I guess it's almost a year now of working with Rebecca Teddy, is like, ask questions. It's okay. Like, we live in this world that it's like not okay to ask questions, right? Right? Because it signals that you don't know. Oh, you don't know this? Oh, you, you know, there's, your clock speed doesn't fit. There's the door, right? Or whatever it is. But if you ask questions and start with a really simple, really powerful question that Professor Teddy, Rebecca Teddy asks all the time, is this the truth? Is it true? Right? I mean, like, that's the simplest, hardest question you can ask, I think. Is it true? And we're building our algorithm to be practicing our prudence, right? Another one. And I picked this up from St. Francis to Sales, right? Does it involve sin? Well, yes or no, right? If no, go the other way. Or I'm sorry, if it doesn't involve sin, go that way, right? If yes, head home, right? Time to pray, time to exclude yourself, right? Is it true? Does it involve sin? Does it live up to the commandments? Now there, it gets a little bit more, you know, okay. And Luke addresses the Tenth Commandment in his book Wanting in much later chapters. I'm very excited about that. But like, in my current life, honor thy father and thy mother. Okay. What does that look like, right? From a, from an algorithmic point of view, right? And then here's another, these are powerful. How, when was the last time you asked, I'm going to, I got to watch your faces. When was the last time that you asked, when? Or compared to what? That's another favorite of mine, compared to what? Or why, right? And as parents, you know, if you ask why, it's accusatory. You're going to get defense and, you know, hearsay. So the better question is, how so? Right? Or my mom used to say, how come? Then I knew I was in trouble, right? It's like, John Landen, how come you X, Y, Z? It's like, because I wasn't thinking, and I'm in trouble, and I'm guilty, and I'll fix it, right? But we're building this kind of this algorithm. And in Catholicism, we might even call it a litany, a litany of things to ask ourselves, right? That helps us lead to this virtue of prudence. And the business model canvas is nothing more than that, right? How many of you have looked at the BMC? I know, I know that it's a loaded question because I know most of you have. If you haven't, what we want to do, and if you have too, those of you watching at home on YouTube, it's been my experience that teachers, classroom teachers with limited or no business and entrepreneurial experience, they will look at the BMC and be like, ah, yeah, I'm out. This looks weird. I don't, I don't get it, right? They think there's some kind of voodoo or hoodoo going on there. It's just a graphic organizer. It's like a calendar, right? It's just a way for us to put answers to these very important questions that we need to ask. And it's not just about business. I think business model canvas is a limiting name, you know, labels are limiting, by the way. It's just a canvas, it's a graphic organizer for making decisions. And that's why we love it in Seed. We've put it in Module Six, and we're talking about the virtue of prudence because I've seen this happen where students of mine get out there, they're running their coffee shops, going great. Money's coming in the door. It's fantastic. Then they run into an issue, and I'll say, well, you should run that through the BMC. Have you done that? And they're like, no. Well, let's do it. And then we literally, we just get out a sheet of paper, we draw it on a sheet of paper, which I think my advice to anyone is learn to draw the BMC. It's super simple. It's just a handful of lines. But then you've got, you don't have to be buying canvases or printing canvases. But when it comes right down to it, and this is why we lead with this in Module Six, is that it's just essentially nine questions, okay? Nine questions that help us to build an idea on one single really highly visible sheet of paper, to the answers to these nine questions, and also where we still have questions to ask. And I think that Rick and David both kind of hinted at this, it's continuous. You never stop. You're always going back to that BMC because it's constantly changing. Because one element of the BMC is, what do we need to do next, right? And we'll see that. That's one of the questions. It's always in there. What's next? What do we need to do next? And whether that's going back to our strategy documents or the decisions that we made and why, or going forward with, okay, we've got all those plates spinning very nicely, let's spin another one. Or, you know, whatever your next thing is. And so why we lead with the nine questions, it's kind of like those of you that were 80s babies. It's like the Mr. Miyagi wax on, wax off, where you think you're just doing work, but you're actually learning how to defend yourself. You're learning karate by waxing Mr. Miyagi's cars or painting his fence. There's a Shameless Karate Kid reference. The first one, not the Will Smith Jackie Chan version, right? Like the actual, you know, back in the day. Anyway, so, yeah, yes. Wow, it's, it is that popular. They've brought it back. Yeah.
And by the way, it's been a fabulous series, in case you're wondering.
I'm a little behind. I'm going to, I'll be honest. But of course, I have a six-year-old son, so I've not done much else but work and change diapers, feed babies. But so when we get into Module Six, one of the first things we're doing is we're talking about the nine questions. And so wanted to take that upon ourselves and ask those nine questions. But let's talk about, let's answer those nine questions from the perspective of the Catholic Entrepreneurship and Design Experience, Seed itself, right? Like, let's, let's take a dose of our own medicine here, right? So the very first question, and you don't have to start at the first question, you can start anywhere, right? But in Seed, if we ask ourselves, what is the problem being solved for Seed? What are we, what is, what is the problem that Seed is solving?
Well, I'd say for me, and again, there's several problems that are solved here. You can layer it. But for me, it's solving the problem of finding a community that is teaching principled entrepreneurship. As simple as that. And, you know, because, you know, teaching a class, as anybody knows, is not done in a vacuum. It's not done in a silo. It has to be done with community, you know, if you're going to teach any course, English, mathematics. It's, now, entrepreneurship, you can go out and buy a curriculum online, and you can implement it and probably be successful in teaching it. But the challenge and the twist that we put on it is teaching entrepreneurship based on principles and Catholic values. And that is a harder, you know, you're adding a degree of difficulty. You know, you're adding a degree, a degree of difficulty to that because finding communities that support that are, are much more rare. So I would say just from a very high level for me, it solved the problem of finding community, like-minded community.
And we're glad you're here, David. In fact, in my notes, in prepping for this, I had not included that one. But it's, it's absolutely a value proposition of seed. Absolutely.
Very important for, I mean, John, you know, when we started talking about this a year and a half ago, I kind of felt on an island, right? I mean, I was like.
And, and then asking that question, right? Who, what, what is the value proposition of seed? You know, the obvious is that it is, it's entrepreneurship education based on Catholic social teaching and doctrine. But it's also solving this other problem, right? What is the problem being solved of, of you meeting others like you, right? This idea of community is, is also part of, uh, living in community is, is part of Catholic social doctrine. Am I wrong? And, and so that is absolutely, uh, what, one of the problems being solved. Anybody else? What is the problem being solved by seed? It's okay. I wanted to ask because as soon as David started talking, we uncovered another one that I hadn't written down. But it's also very important, right? Because it is, it provides insight into the answer to the next question, which is, who is it for? Who is seed for? Well, David mentioned it's, it's for the Catholic school teacher. Right? In that it provides community for those other school teachers, but who else is it for? It might feel obvious, but you can say it.
Home school students, college students, business.
Yeah. Got a couple of homeschool communities represented. What's up homeschool folks? That's you, talking to you, right? You're on the list. And then of course we have, we have, uh, the more traditional Catholic high school teacher and David Friend, right? I just called you traditional, by the way, David.
Thank you.
When we know that's not true, you just work at a traditional place, sort of, a wonderful traditional place, right? College students, college professors, right? It's also for us. It's a great way for Kieran to interface with, with people in his community, get in the door and talk about CUA there, down there in Tucson. Right? So who's it for? And so that, this is a great question, right? And if you, if you are working on a, a business venture and you really can't articulate who it's for, time to go back to the drawing board, right? So the next one is how does the customer get the solution? How'd y'all get seed?
Virtually.
Right? Right? And it might feel obvious like this, we're just putting the training wheels on here. This is, we're wax on, wax off here, right, folks? So, so yeah, virtually, right? And I wrote down Google Drive for the materials. But we've also got, we've got trainings, right? So we use, uh, Zoom counts, right? As how, how does the customer get the solution? Also Rick is crushing it over on Basecamp. We've got a new self-directed seed certified facilitator training pathway that Rick is right there in module six right now. Like the, the timing with you, Rick has just been divine. I think that's a godsend right there, right? And then of course, we're prepping and we're planning because we want to launch or basically relaunch the Seed Summer Academy, where we host teachers and students at the campus of the Catholic University of America in the summer of 2022. Back when, back in the, in the real life on campus, we're actually looking at probably the third week of June. If you want to put that on your calendars, we'd love to host you all. And, uh, it might change, but it's definitely going to be June 2022 that is happening, right? So how does the customer get the solution? Great question to ask. And in terms of seed, Google Drive is where we put the materials. Basecamp is where we get training and then on campus is where we have this amazing epic event. So next up in the nine questions. How does the company, in this case, seed manage the customer relationship?
Well, I think for these types of events, community events, oh, by the way, I would add one more thing to how we get it. We also get it through consultation, meaning that, um, I don't think there's ever been a module that I've rolled out to the students without consulting either with somebody from seed or consulting with, you know, one of my peers in seed. So consultation is another way we get seed.
Great point. In fact, I wrote that down. I wrote down my first bullet point under how does the company manage the customer relationship? I wrote down John, Luke and Rebecca, right? But this is something that you want to help your students feel comfortable with when they're working with the BMC. It, it can go in both places. Like it's not wrong to have it in both places. Right? Like, yes, we do get the solution through consultation, but there's also that customer relationship piece. Human beings, right, can be the solution of the channel, both, both the channel and the customer relationship piece, right? And then how did the company manage the customer relationship? So things like this, right? Groundwork sessions, fireside chats, panel discussions. Andreas, we always get a ton of new subscribers when Andreas goes and speaks at like the Catholic homeschool conference, like he did a couple of weeks ago. Um, then we, you know, we have panel discussions. We send, uh, not a ton of email, but we do send some email. And then of course we're communicating now with the community on Basecamp, which I'm hoping to share a little bit more with you on that at the end of this session. Right? And a, and a bit, another plug for Instagram. We have an Instagram account now. So then moving on, so that, uh, that question of how does the company manage the customer relationship? Maps directly to the segment on the BMC customer relationships, like verbatim, that's where it goes. Right? So then the next question, how much does it cost to create and deliver the solution to the customer? Well, you know, uh, salaries are expensive, people, Luke, John, Rebecca, we like to eat. We like to live indoors, wear clothing, put gas in our cars, you know, buy health insurance, uh, which is quickly outpacing, uh, all my other expenses, but that's a thing, right? But there's also costs like our website, right? That, that doesn't, uh, come directly from my salary or Luke's salary. Uh, and then we do things like video production. So we're recording this. But then we have to chop it up and put some title work in it. That all has costs. What are some other costs that you might think of? For seed.
And time, I mean, I don't know what, you know, cost you put on that, but it's not something that you can immediately just download uptake and then teach. You have to work with the material. So, there's practice time, there's consultation time, there's, you know, implementation time, design time. I mean, yeah, I take, you know, one of the units and I break it apart and, you know, figure out how I'm going to, you know, how much class time I'm going to dedicate to it. So.
Something else very soon, coming in July.
What's that?
We're back, uh, we're back to traveling, right? So we'll have some travel costs, which is good. I'm, I'm gonna go and see my friend David Friend out in, in California and, and visit with him. I'm going to go to an event out there and then hopefully very soon we'll be traveling to meet with schools in person because it's so much more productive, right? To just be in the space with the people and, and do the work. We've kind of been hiding under the cover of the pandemic and being very prudent in safety measures. But I think though those times are soon coming to an end, right? And there are costs involved with that. But next up in the nine questions, what does the customer pay in terms of seed?
Pay for the M code assessment or the training.
Good. That's a good one. Well, currently the materials are free and we're doing this on purpose, right? It's, it's actually a model of a business model where it's basically donor supported, right? The Seoka Center is funded by donors. And then they, we budget that out and some of that goes to pay for my salary. Some of it goes to pay for Luke's salary and Kieran's salary, Rebecca's salary, and then our travel costs and, and such things. And we're, we're giving this away free on purpose because we want to establish a relationship with you, with schools, with our customer segments. All of them are very important to us. And then ultimately, you know, we want you to be wholly entrepreneurs, but we'd sure love for you to be a graduate of the Catholic University of America. That would be really great. And that's part of the reason why we're trying to make it as bootstrapped as possible. There's an entrepreneurial word you might hear, right? But beyond that, um, you know, it's donor supported. We give it away for free and we try to keep it as low cost as possible, right? So then, then there's this piece where, so that maps directly to revenue streams. The next question I wanted to tackle was what tasks have to be done to get the solution to the customer?
You have to create all the written materials. You have to create the groundwork sessions and the base camp, and you gotta put all the videos on there, the YouTube channel, the, the books, the articles, uh, all the links to everything.
Yeah. Yes. And that is constant, right? Like that's a constant, that's the to-do list that never gets clicked off. It's a great source of, of endorphins for me. Cause I'm like, oh, what can I do today? Click that box, check that box. But there's also, uh, you know, because we're donor supported, we have to spend, uh, we have to have a tack of fundraising. We are, we're working on our annual report for the Seoka Center and thank you for helping us with our, our numbers, right? By, by going out and sharing seed with these students and these end users that we're hopeful that you'll get to. You're helping us to go and, and raise more money and do more. It's this wonderful virtuous cycle that happens, right? The marketing on Instagram has to be done. The fundraising has to be done. But also the intellectual property rights clearing has to be done. Like in module five, we use, it turns out we're using the, an entire chapter from Robert Novak's book, not just an excerpt. And that requires a letter to be written and permission to be sought. And hopefully we'll get that and it'll be fine. Rebecca does that for us. So yeah, those, those are the to-do lists and some of those are never done. And then the next question, so, so that in the BMC, uh, the what tasks have to be done, that maps directly to key activities. What are the key activities that have to be done for your business to run, right? So then the next question that maps directly to key assets is what kinds of tools, equipment, space, et cetera, are needed to create the solution and get it to the customer? Things like I wrote down intellectual horsepower, right? We've got to, we've got to have, we've got to know this stuff. We've got to be able to know it, to synthesize it, to even know it exists, to put it in the right sequence, to put it out there for you all. We've got to have some video production equipment. We've got to have, thank God for the internet. Otherwise 2020 would have been a total disaster, right? We wouldn't be nearly where we are. And that means that we've got to have Zoom and we've got to have Google and we've got to have a seedprogram.com website. And then we've got to have, well, we don't have to have Basecamp, but boy, is it a nice tool. It makes us more productive. We've got to have some sort of, uh, mail, email, uh, blast system. We use MailChimp for that. And those are all assets, right? Our accounts that we set up, those things then serve us and help us to be more productive in our pursuit of what we're, what we're doing with seed. And that maps directly to key assets on the business model canvas. And then this one kind of trips young people up. The next one is, is mapped directly to key partnerships. Who outside the company helps to get the solution to the customer?
Well, John.
Right? Yeah. Kieran, Rebecca, Luke, right? And in fact, we've really been blessed in that we, we have the Catholic University of America as one of our biggest web hooks, right? Cause they own catholic.edu. Now you can't really, I mean, like from a, um, key market, keyword marketing point of view, it's nice to own catholic.edu. That helps, right? And then we also have our partners that are, are, are funders, right? Like the Aku, like our friends down in Miami, the Aku and Willie Quado. But then there's you, right? So you are absolutely key partners. Your seed facilitators, you're out there, you're actually the ones that are toting the most water. It might seem like we, we work our tails off, but you are the ones that are bringing this to the students. Our friends over at the National Homeschool Conference, they're helping us. Like, like I mentioned, every time Andreas goes and speaks to them, we kind of blow up, which is awesome. We have friends at the Sophia Institute Press. We absolutely count them as key partners. And then we have friends in our fundraising efforts in an, an organization called Stand Together. So essentially those nine questions I think are actually a little bit better than the pure BMC themselves. What's the problem being solved? Who is the solution for? And how does the customer get the solution? How does the company manage the customer relationship? How does it, or how much does it cost to create and deliver the solution to the customer? What does the customer pay? What tasks have to be done to get the solution to the customer? What kinds of tools, equipment, space are needed to create the solution and get it to the customer? And who outside the company helps get the solution to the customer? So in those nine questions, we've really covered the basics of the business model canvas, right? And in order to, to like, just get something down on paper, that's why we start at the business, the, the nine questions instead of the BMC proper. We want to just start with those because it's easy just to get some momentum going. Any thoughts, questions on that before we move to the next segment? Okay. Now for the interactive segment of the groundwork session. Check out this link. So if you go here, you will see, or you should see, the, the goal is that you'll be able to see a kind of a blank nine question canvas. Let me know. Hopefully you're able to see that. Yeah, there's Rebecca. And the rest of you will probably show up as anonymous chipmunks to me. Yep. Anonymous chipmunk. Here and so what we're gonna do next, each one of these segments has, it, it has those nine questions in the proper segment of the nine questions canvas. And you can click down into them. And let me show you here. You should be able to type your thoughts here. Can you see that? Want to type in there? What we're gonna do is I've asked our friend Rick Costello over at Kurt's Brothers to talk to us about his business. So in the, uh, module six, one of the blocks is that you invite an entrepreneur to come to your class and share with you about their business, about their venture. And the students are going to be listening and mapping and just taking notes, basically, what they hear into the columns and categories of the business model canvas. So what we're gonna do now is we're gonna kind of model that, right? We're gonna listen to Rick. Rick's gonna tell us about his business. And we're gonna take his, his information that he shares with us and we're gonna put it in the right spot or our best guess of where it should go into the nine questions canvas that we're all sharing. Does that sound good? Okay then. Ladies and gentlemen, Rick Costello, Kurt's Brothers, among many others, take it away.
Okay. So Kurt's Brothers is a 70 plus year old business. We're a waste to resource company that sells, uh, landscape materials. Uh, we're a producer of products, uh, like mulches and soils, uh, aggregates. And we get most of our products from waste streams. So we take in yard waste, yard clippings, uh, we convert that into mulches and compost and soils. Uh, we take dredgings, sediment from, uh, rivers that are dredged, the Cuyahoga River. And we take the dredgings and we mix those with certain things and make them into soils. So we're taking a waste stream that used to be dumped into the lake and we converted into a product. Uh, we take wood chippings, uh, from land clearing and make them into mulches. We take, we have a landfill that is a construction and demolition debris landfill. So when you tear down and they've torn down a number of schools this year, we take in the debris and we, we crush the bricks and the cement and we make recycled aggregates. Uh, we recycle metal and wood, uh, out of, um, from demolitions. And we convert stuff into products. So we're a producer of, uh, mulches, soils, aggregates, stones. And then we also have nine wholesale slash retail locations where we distribute our products to, uh, retail customers, delivery, uh, with, uh, via, you know, single axle trucks. Uh, we also, uh, distribute out of those locations. We also distribute out of those locations to landscapers, both commercial and residential landscapers. We sell to wholesalers. So we'll sell to other garden centers that distribute our products. And we also sell to the construction market where you'll have big contractors who are doing large projects and need a lot of soil or may even, or maybe exporting soil from the site, you know, putting in a development, for example. There may be a net deficit for soil or there could be a surplus of soil. We make our products with large machinery. So a lot of the, you know, Caterpillar, John Deere, you see a lot of those Komatsu, big yellow pieces of machinery that are, you know, bulldozers, excavators. And so we use a lot of machinery to make the products. The products are very heavy. We have logistical issues as a result of that. We have a fleet of trucks that get our products, both incoming raw materials that come in. Those are converted into products and then again, distributed back out either through the wholesale locations or sometimes directly to consumers. We have a very seasonal business. So we'll probably do 65 to 70% of our revenue between March and July. And we might do 50% of it in May and June. So depending on weather. So it's a sick, it's a seasonal business. Let's see what else I can tell you. We, we do a large volume. So we're a very high-volume producer. We're probably the largest producer of mulch and soil in the state. And we have very large geographic distribution in Cleveland and Akron, all, all of north-central Ohio and northeast Ohio. So we, we reach quite a, quite a large footprint for our products. One of the things I think that is interesting about the business is we get paid to take our raw materials. So we get paid to take in yard waste, then we convert it to a product and we sell it. So we get paid for the material coming in and we get paid for the material we produce.
Wow.
Wow. One other point that I'll make is we, we, because of what we do, we have to have special permitting. So we have permitting, we're through the EPA or the Ohio Department of National Resources. Our facilities are regulated by the EPA. So we'll have, we have a Class Two facility, but we have different classes related to what we're doing. So composting requires special permitting because you have stormwater discharge. You have other things that you need to do when you're performing the activities that we perform. And then we also work very closely with regulators because we take waste streams that would typically, as an example, we take incinerator ash from a wastewater treatment facility, which would have been landfilled historically. And we work with the EPA to figure out how to blend it in soils because it has a high organic content. So we, we, we partner with the EPA to take waste streams, to dilute them and include them in products so that they can be resold and used in that landfill. So we've, we've, we actually track, we've kept, I think it's 10 million tons of, of waste out of landfills.
Wow.
So that's another very important piece of what we do, working with cities and regulators and, and citizens, right? So we're, we interact, you know, we're taking in the yard waste from the city and then we're selling it back to them as mulches and soils. So.
This is huge. You can see, everybody can see what's going on on the canvas here, right? Like, we're all just like frantically just typing things that we hear. And this is, this is beautiful. This is exactly what I wanted to have happen. So thank you for that. Rick, wow. I, you know, I had a feeling that your business was complex, right? In fact, one pro tip I would encourage is that once you get past, say, three customers or three solutions or three revenue streams, once that fourth one hits, start a new BMC. Have a totally separate business model canvas for each one of those revenue streams. And I bet, I bet Rick will say probably something similar in that, like, you think of each one of these different things as a vertical or a thing that you do. But for now, this is wonderful. So what'd you guys notice? Or any questions for Rick? Or who else is going to geek out as hard as I am right now? This is so cool.
Rick, you say that you get given money and then it, and then you then sell it. But what does it cost you to, in between that, like that, like, to make something that was, you bought, but then can then be sold on? What's that in between? Is there a cost for you in that?
Yeah, there's a lot of cost and that's where, so we, that's where we have all the large machinery. So a significant portion of the cost is the transportation, both incoming and outgoing. It's a significance, it's heavy, dirt's heavy, so is mulch. So it's, it's very expensive to transport. And so your, your shipping radius around a production facility is, is pretty confined. But the, the expenses are the machinery, the, the repair and maintenance, the labor, you know, fuel costs. You know, those are the expenses and it's a commodity. It's really a commodity. We sell dirt. So I mean, it's a commodity. It's not, we do differentiate in a number of different ways. We have, we have technical products and stuff like that. But the cost is significant. It's, it's primarily transportation, repair and maintenance on machinery and labor are our three biggest expenses in terms of producing a product. And, you know, those are, you know, something that we, we track on a daily basis. So it's, there's quite a bit of cost that goes into that. And the, the more times you handle something or move it, the more expensive it gets.
Here's what I noticed just happened, right? We were all looking at the canvas that we're sharing and over here in the bottom left in the cost structures, right? There was nothing. And so all Karen did was just ask that one question, right? Knowing that it's like probably one of the hardest ones to answer. It's, and it depends, all, you know, all the details matter. But all, all Karen had to do was say, well, how much does it cost to create and deliver a solution to the customer? And, and he massaged it. He made it his own. But that's essentially what he did. And I love that, right? Where's the, where's the gap in our BMC here? Oh, right there. Let's ask, let's ask about it, right? That's very prudent. I love that. And we're also a little shy, a little light on what does the customer pay? I got that the customers pay you to take their yard waste. I get that, right? And if you, if you were going to answer just generally that question, right? What does the customer pay? Rick, what would you say?
So we have segments of customers and
Right.
the people that pay the most are you folks, the retail people that we deliver to your house. So, you know, a yard of mulch will go from, you know, $15 to 40, depending on who's buying it. And so what does the customer pay? They pay based on volume, they base, based on their, their category. So retail pays the most. Then landscapers would pay the next highest price. Contractors and then wholesalers. So wholesalers were, you know, we're, we're a step away. We're a part of a channel. So they're, they're redistributing. So, right? They, they get the best price because they have to make a markup on it. But then we have to, we make the most on the retail and the commercial. But that takes the whole infrastructure of a store from. So you have the, you have additional costs associated with servicing retail or, or commercial accounts.
One thing I noticed when he answered that, right? We've got customers pay them to take their yard waste and they pay the most. So we want to do kind of a little crosswalk and look over here in our customer, who is the solution for? This is the customer segment, right? Want to make sure we at least have that retail landscaping customer there. One of the things about the business model canvas is once you start putting stuff in there, you want to make sure and not orphan any, any detail, any, any information that's in there, right? So if you've got a piece of, the customer pays, the retail customer pays the most. We want to make sure the retail customer's in here, right? But then we know that wholesalers and landscapers, they, they need to be in here too, right? Segments of customers that pay different amounts. And we're just kind of doing the old red line test, right? If it's here, it goes over to, and it should be in all the other nine segments, right? So that we could pull, and one of the things Strategizer talks about doing is when you use a business model canvas, to use color-coded Post-it notes. And the reason for the color coding is that you have a consistent color for the, the nine elements of one particular either product, service, or customer segment. So that you can see, okay, all of those are that nice, pretty periwinkle blue. All my yellows are all of my retail customers. All of my periwinkle blues are all of my landscaping customers. Quick question for me, Rick. When you think about your, your relationship to the Environmental Protection Agency and other regulators, do you think of them as a customer?
I, I do. I think that in, in, in my mind, when I think about the regulators, I think about doing things, you know, by the book, right? So, you know, in terms of a customer, I look at them as someone who, you know, wants to, who's going to look at us as someone who follows the rules. Because that's, that's, it's a bad day. Like, we, we prefer not to hear from them ever. You know, their customer, we wish, hopes never calls. But that, that's the case where, you know, you have to follow the rules. You got to be on top of your game. So they're a customer in terms of making sure that we follow the guidelines and the rules. Because they're, you know, that's part of what we do to be able to do what we're, what we deliver to customers.
Okay. And that's totally fair. And that's a very advanced way to think about it. One of the things I would say is like another question to ask is this, is this a customer is, do they buy a product or service from you, right? Is there an actual transaction? And if not, we definitely have a place for them over here, right? We have a place for them in terms of, those are absolutely key partners. But it doesn't hurt to think of them as, as customer segments, right? Because they can pay you with, one, letting you operate your business the way you're operating it currently, right? And they can also pay you with plaques and recognition as being an excellent, you know, example of how to do this, right? And that helps with customer relationships. That's something that you can tout in marketing, right? That plaque would be very prominently displayed that you guys are doing this and doing it well. So it's not wrong to think of them as a customer. In fact, it's good to think of them as a customer. And absolutely, we want them over here in key partnerships, right? So that was, that was fun. Questions from anybody else? That's okay, right? And so this is a very complex business. And the business model canvas in and of itself, when it's all said and done, is extremely, is extremely dense. Anything you want to, want to share, Rick, before I reveal your wonderful work? That you, Rick mapped all of this to the BMC and I've got it for you. But I, you know, I want to build some suspense first.
Well, I mean, the one thing I would say is that looking at our business at this level is one way to look at it. But to get to something that's actionable, I think, you know, as you said, you know, maybe I look at one product. I look at one vertical, you know, and I think, I think through like, how do I, you know, if I'm looking at a retail customer, then I look at, well, what do I sell my retail customer? How do I get the stuff to my retail customer? What's the cost of getting stuff to a retail customer? So I think to get to actionable stuff, you have to, you know, maybe drill down and do multiple iterations of this. We just happen to have a, you know, a pretty complex business that does a lot of different things with a lot of different segments. So, you know, I think the result from, you know, the one I did is really 60,000 feet. And you'd have to take it to another level to get to something that's actionable.
Yeah. Well, and, and what a great job you did, right? Like, I'm imagining you, you show up to David Friend's class, you know, they're working in Module Six and you're the, you're the guest entrepreneur. And we're all like frantically trying to, to take notes into the BMC about your business. And it would look probably a lot like what, what we came up with on Google. But if you would, Rick, I've got it here, you're the PDF of the one you created. If you would, like, kind of walk us through not just what's here, but like your thought process of when you were filling it out. What were your, what was going on in your brain?
So if I start over on the left, in terms of equipment vendors, municipalities, regulators, we were talking about the people that we have to partner with. You know, I was thinking about, from an equipment perspective, I was thinking about what goes into the cost? What, what, what is important stakeholders? And we have a lot of iron, a lot of, lot of machinery. We spend a lot of money on equipment. So having reliable sources, vendors for either rental equipment, parts, et cetera, is important. Same with material suppliers, even though people pay us by and large to take materials, we also have to augment what we have. So we'll buy, we'll buy wood to make mulch. We get about 70% of our stuff paid in. But we also have to buy in raw materials. And then I was thinking like landscaper association, homeowners, construction contractors. So we go through organizations, associations, the Ohio Contractors Associations, we, with landscapers and different kinds of things. So those are kind of some of our partners from a marketing perspective and how we get our name out. You know, key activities, I was thinking about, you know, production. You know, Karen was asking how, you know, what does it cost? And I was thinking about what we do, our production, how we, how we make stuff. So we make stuff, as I described, you know, we're, we're taking in stuff, we're, you know, we're, we have screeners that screen it to different sizes. We, we crush concrete. We do different things like that. And I was also thinking about waste-to-resource because some of our stuff we buy and resell. But by and large, we look, you know, the thing that makes us unique is that we're taking waste materials and turning them into something. And then I thought also about being zoned properly to be able to do that. You can't just compost a massive pile of compost. You know, compost smells after a while and neighbors don't like it. So you got to be careful about that. Sales and marketing, I looked at serving landscapers, our, our, our locations. I thought about key activities being, you know, how do we position our stores in a way that they have overlapping distribution circles? So I can hit customers within a geographic range, kind of in a web? Because that's what we do. So we have, you know, Cleveland, Akron, Canton. You know, we go west and east and in Ohio, in the northern part of the state anyways. Key resources, again, machinery. We talked about transportation. I talked about our stuff's heavy. Marketing and production services. Website's important. Go ahead.
Diesel and gasoline, right? Like, you've got to have, you probably buy futures of that stuff.
We buy a lot of it. We do. Yep. The gas prices are hurting right now. So. So let's see, trained operators, relationships with large contractors. You know, trained people is a, is a huge issue right now. Even finding people that want to work is a, is a big issue. So when, especially now with a seasonal business, we scale up a lot in the, in the spring. And that's a constant battle. So one of the things that's key to our business is being, from an HR perspective, able to scale quickly and train people. So that's important. Value proposition.
I was going to say, that would, that would go right there in your key activities, right, is recruiting and training.
Yep, yep. Value proposition, and we've talked about a lot of this. I, I think one of the things that is unique Um, I, I think one of the things that is unique about us is the fact that we are a waste resource. So we're a green company. People like, uh, the fact that we're keeping 10 million tons of stuff out of landfills and we're recycling and reusing. So, uh, that's a key, that's one of the key value propositions. Uh, we talked about the segments and the customer relationships. I think the website's big for us, so, you know, um, in comparison to the competition, it's a, it's a differentiator. Um, we sell a lot of material on the website and it goes, so it goes right from, you know, your computer and the next day it shows up at your house. Um, very automated on the technology side there, which is important from a cost perspective in a commodity business. Um, and then we talked about the channels of wholesale distributors, uh, retail, which is direct to consumer, uh, landscapers that, that pick up at our, uh, wholesale retail locations. And contractors, um, are, we, we take the product to the location, whether it's a development, a building being constructed, uh, highways. Uh, we do a lot of business with the Department of Transportation and people like that. Um, let's see. Uh, we taught revenue streams, mulch and soil and aggregates are our biggest movers. You know, the kind of the 80/20 rule, uh, tipping. So we get, I mentioned, we get paid for people, we take stuff in and we get paid, um, for that. And then we also sell some ancillary products in our stores. Things, anything from like a wheelbarrow, we sell decorative stone, we sell lighting and hardscapes, um, for patios and stuff like that, some buy and resell.
Can I get a, a nice wind chime? Can I get a nice set of wind chimes?
You know, we don't have wind chimes, but, uh, uh, it could be, that could be something we could launch. Uh, but I think things that you bring up, which I think is important, uh, as it relates to a strategy thing. It's like, for example, you say wind chimes. Um, I think one of the things that we have to understand from a strategy standpoint is what we're able, what we're good at and what we're not. And so like, uh, retail customers will look for, like, if you buy a lot of mulch, you'll buy bulk mulch, uh, and you'll buy it online. Or you buy soil, if you need a lot of soil, you're not going to buy, you know, 150 bags of it, you're going to buy a truckload. Uh, but something like a wind chime, like our retail stores are built for contractors. And so that's something that we have to be aware of. Just because we have a large retail segment and they pay us a premium, doesn't mean that it's always a fit to add up a retail product. Because the only way that retail people find us is online. Uh, if you come to our store, you would not be impressed because there's 100 landscapers in line waiting to get loaded with bulk materials. And you'd be like, I don't want to get run over by these people driving around in trucks. So, you know, it's important to also understand what you're, you know, where, how you get to the customer, where, where it makes sense, where it doesn't. And so like for a wind chime, the only way they'd find us would be online. And then I'd be competing with Amazon and everybody else.
Right, yeah.
So anyways.
That, I, I think that's the definition of a shiny object that you should not chase, right? Is, is a wind chime for Kurt's Brothers. That's wonderful. So let me ask you this, Rick. Um, what, when you were doing all this, did anything new? Did you discover anything new or anything you hadn't thought about? Did you have any kind of uncovering of anything at all in your mind?
Um, I don't know that it was anything that, um, was, you know, brand new, but it, it was a different format. So looking at it and actually writing the things down and talking about the, the regulators and talking about the, uh, cities and counties that we deal with, um, you know, reminds me to consider those people, you know? And we're talking about, um, you know, how do I, how do I sell more mulch or more, more soil? Or how do I get more incoming raw materials? Um, it's important to consider all those things. And sometimes you, you focus only on the people that pay you money.
Those networks and relationships, that's huge. Anybody else?
Do, um, very good. What, like, hearing you talk and say, our realist, like, the, um, for the, the highest seller, just the, not the contractors, but just the retail, that's your highest expense out having a retail shop? But it comes back to a little bit that idea of prudence that, that you, like, you don't have to serve people. In a sense, your company could just focus on doing the contractors and doing that. But it, it sounds like you've made an intentional decision to help with retail and those that want to recycle as part of your business. And it, it, would, would that be a fair argument to say that, that, that you, you allow regular retailers, if they want to do the right thing, to come and be served by you?
Yeah, we do. So we, we, um, we allow, um, homeowners to drop off yard waste, uh, tree trimmings, those kinds of things. Uh, and I think you, you know, you, uh, kind of hit it on the head is, we, we serve retail in a, via one channel, really. Well, I shouldn't say primarily through one channel, primarily through the website. So, you know, there's only so, there's only so many people that can supply bulk. And we're bulk, we don't deliver bags of material, we deliver, we truckloads of material. So we service retail primarily through the website. We will get retail people that will drop off yard waste. We, we provide a service for people that want to drop off yard waste, tree trimming, those kinds of things. And we do have retail people that come into the, um, customers or, or come into the, um, our locations, our wholesale locations. But they're primarily set up for people that are picking up bulk materials. Um, so we just have to be careful to understand where we're a fit and where someone's going to give us a good Yelp review or a good, you know, Facebook review. Because we delivered, you know, beautiful mulch to their house as opposed to their car getting dirty when they pull in and dust all over the place and stuff like that. So you gotta be careful that you, um, understand where you're going to be successful in terms of making a customer happy and making them upset by inviting them to come into an environment that isn't necessarily, um, conducive to someone driving in with a BMW and, you know, next to a bunch of dump trucks and, and, uh, landscapers, you know, peeling out through the thing to get to the next job.
I do have one question, forgive me if you covered it when I was off camera dealing with a howling beagle. So I might be embarrassing myself by repeating. But, um, what, Rick, how do you store these materials? I assume that there's, you know, you have to control the inflow and outflow of things. That must be a very complex pro, um, process, I imagine.
So, um, yes, it is. So our, our material, like, our, our material deteriorates. You know, the, the yard, the mulch, yard waste, compost deteriorate. So the longer it sits there, the less you have. So you do have to be, you do have to meter how you produce. Um, you know, because if I have a log, it'll stay there for all year. If I shred it into mulch, it'll start disintegrating. And so one of the things you have to watch is, is that process. Because if I make 100,000 yards of mulch in November, by March, it's 80,000 yards of mulch, right? So if you imagine, you know, I want to make 100,000 yards and sell 100,000. If I wait four months, it's going to deteriorate. So we have to be careful about how we do that. We also, though, we can't necessarily control the incoming. So typically what happens is people bring stuff in and it takes a volume of area because it's in pieces. When we shred it, it takes much less space. So, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's a balancing act. Because we'll get, you know, in the fall, right? All the leaves fall down and then people bring us a bunch of leaves and then we shred them. We let it compost, it becomes organic material, we mix it with soil. So it's a, it's a balancing act between how much space we have, uh, how much time we have to process it. Uh, and, uh, between now and how much we're going to sell in the spring, we have to, you know, meter production over the colder months so that we get a head start on the spring with a bunch of material ready for sale. Uh, but we don't want it ready for sale too far in advance because then it deteriorates.
That sounds like a heuristic to me. I don't know about you guys. But I mean, like, that is like why this virtue of prudence is so important. There's this like litany of, of questions that you need to ask and, and you gotta be constantly thinking about, I mean, the seasons and, and how you get, how you get there and you're alive and you have product to sell. And, and, uh, it's, people are going to want it, right? And then, uh, balancing that with like reading the paper to see which river's being dredged or which, what's the new director of the local EPA or the, you know, like, what a, what a business you've got yourself into, Rick. And this comes after, I'll, I'll let everybody know, this is not Rick's like, you know, he, he didn't, you know, graduate college and get started with the Kurt's Brothers. He did a lot of other things. This is, this is what he's currently doing. Um, and bringing all of his wisdom and experience to bear with a very multifaceted, complex business. So Rick, thank you very much. In fact, maybe a word of caution to you facilitators out there that are looking at your guest entrepreneur for module six. You know, Rick's business on paper, uh, you know, you're looking in the phone book, yeah, sure. You know, this, this would be, that's pretty complicated. Might be, might think about, well, maybe you want somebody with a, maybe a simpler business. Or you get with Rick beforehand and you have coffee or some other beverage and you say, hey, let's talk about just one element for my, I want to put the training wheels on, right? We're still doing wax on, wax off with the BMC. So maybe Rick's just going to talk about one of the elements of his business, right? Just to kind of create that sense of wonder and get that, uh, that encounter with success of understanding at least that element of his business. But maybe if I would have, would have been thinking about it beforehand. But man, this was great. Rick, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other thoughts or questions? We're almost out of time, kids.
Yeah, I would, I would echo what you said, John, because as we, it's, it's a complex business and, and it would be, it would have been enough to focus on mulch or
Right, yes.
Sales to retail people or mulch sales to, uh, landscapers would have been enough.
Right, yes. And, you know, you would have had 99% of everybody just talking about how you eliminate, you know, thousands of tons of waste from the landfill. I mean, you know, Goodwill is going to the bank on that right now. Like, that's probably what's paying most of their bills is that, what they keep out of landfills, so. Um, but again, you know, you, you get behind the scenes, you think you understand somebody's business because you drove by it and maybe you bought a truckload of mulch from there once. You know, you think you understand it. No, you have no idea. And I saw so many things in there, like just that element of HR and training that permeates the rest of his business, right? Like, that is such a vital piece. And it, it needs to be something that, that we're, you know, pointing out to young people. Just, there's so many different things that, like, David is constantly reminding me, this is a survey class, like, we're going to go over a bunch of stuff. We could get as far into the weeds as we wanted to on one piece of Rick's business and spend a year studying it probably, just from listening to him talk about, you know, we were prepping for this call for restaurant business, right? But portion control has everything to do with that 100,000 square feet of, uh, of mulch that he was talking about producing. So, or when do you shred that long? Well, I don't know, uh, when, you know, what, what month is it? So, uh, thank you so much, Rick. We're probably going to go ahead and wrap up, but there's way more to module six, as you know. So the module project itself is to take that BMC and that your guest entrepreneur has shared with you and iterate on it. And Rick's would be a great example of that. Like, Rick shared with us a problem that he's having. He has a problem of, um, finding people that are willing to work, that want to work and, and, and getting them to come to work and then training them. And, and they have to toe the line. I mean, it's a very dangerous business, so there's a bunch of safety training that has to be done. But also understanding the business and then being able to interface with the various, uh, customer segments. I mean, this person that, these people that you're looking for, Rick, I mean, you, you gotta have some sharp folks up in there. So maybe if you were our, if I was teaching, if I was facilitating this class and you were my guest entrepreneur, I would set my students loose on that. Let's iterate the BMC for Rick and for Kurt's Brothers to help him work on this HR and labor problem that he's got, right? And I'm sure Rick would appreciate that. And maybe it would fruit some ideas for him, maybe not. But it would, if it didn't fruit him brand new ideas, he could at least validate the work that the students did in presenting him with an idea that actually they had maybe considered, tried, or are currently doing. I mean, that always feels good to me to be like, oh, you, you like that idea so much, you're already doing it? Oh, well, that, that's cool, okay. Um, anyway, that is wonderful. This is why I love this stuff. You really do, if you take the time to complete the, just put stuff on the BMC, right? And ask yourself, is this true? Does this go here, right? Is this working? And, and share it with somebody else that's maybe working on the same thing. Then you come up with all of these discoveries and you uncover things that, that you might not have thought about before, think about things differently. So this is the value of the business model canvas and other various strategy approaches, uh, that, that we encourage you to use. We're going to go ahead and wrap our groundwork session for module six, the BMC, focusing on the virtue of prudence. Before we go though, Leaf, Rachel, David, Karen, Rebecca, Rick, let's have, what's, what was, uh, what's one takeaway from today? What, what hit you different in this session? And Rachel, this is her first time, so she can't go first unless we make her go first. So we'll make you go last. Who's, who's going to go first? What's the thing that hit differently today? What'd you learn?
To me, I, I like the, the prudent in action. And where I saw that with that in the model was, was, uh, Rick, your, your attention to, to want to help the, keep the solution or just the profit as part of that. And because of that, customers are, are connecting too. So I think that, that action and prudent, um, came out, um, in a way that you, not being cautious, but you're actually doing, doing stuff prudently by offering that. So that came out very clear and me.
That's a great takeaway.
Uh, for once, um, the, uh, the one thing that kind of struck out to me, John, you started the conversation about business model canvas in saying that if you're not in business, that this can be a kind of a intimidating tool to work with. And that's probably the, the only thing I disagreed with throughout the whole presentation in that I've been in business for 32 years. And, you know, teaching business model canvas did intimidate me because while it, it looks simple and you try to, um, you know, and answering the questions should be simple. You look at it at the macro level and, um, and even this, the, the breakdown on the business, uh, i- is intuitive and should be simple. Um, it can be intimidating, but when you get more familiarity with it, you treat it like the dynamic tool that it is. And it's obvious that Rick has looked at this from a dynamic standpoint, meaning that where he is today is just a snapshot of where he is today. It's not a snapshot of where he'll be and it's a tool that he's going to use going into the future. It takes, it kind of demystifies it a little bit. And, um, you know, there wasn't anything in here that was, you know, um, high thinking, so to speak, right? It, it's intuitive and it's grounded and it's prudent. And that's, when, when you start from that basis, like I said, it, it takes some of the mystery away and it makes it more of a useful dynamic tool. So, um, I, I've got to, I'm going to recalibrate a little bit on how I share this with Stu's.
That's marvelous. Thanks, David.
I agree with Karen's takeaway that, uh, the whole time you were talking, Rick, I was thinking about how you were, um, illustrating the point of, of, of being active. But I was also thinking, if I were a teacher and I had to use Rick's business for a business model canvas, like what exercise would I do? And I think I would do, take your approach, John. I think it would be fun to start with some aspect of the business and then challenge the students to iterate and see how many of the things the business is already doing, they come up with as iterations. I think that would be a fun, um, fun exercise for, for doing a, a student at, um, analysis of a complex business model like that.
Hmm, hmm, nice, agree.
I, I would go back to, um, keeping it simpler. So I think, um, you can iterate on most of the, the key partners, the key activities, et cetera, relate to all the segments really in one way or another. And so picking one, I think, would be, we would be good in focusing on a problem and then letting the students come up with, how would I potentially sell more to retail customers? Given that I can only ship it so far and all the different things that relate to the business? And then they can kind of come up with ideas.
Ooh, so that's a beautiful, like, hey, remember in module four when we did design thinking? We're going to bring that back and we're going to work on this design challenge. That's beautiful. Okay.
Rick, I think that, uh, the idea of
Rick, I think that, uh, the idea of what, of the concept that we have is really remarkable. It's just, um, you know, it, it speaks volumes for wanting to, um, do conservation and follow, uh, the cyclical on, uh, Lado C, I think it's called, uh, Ladado C. Um, um, and just from a very practical point of view, um, you know, the worksheet, John, having, having those, um, BMC worksheets to get all your thoughts down on paper and have the students not only articulate the BMC, um, or have the concepts or ideas in their head, but to actually be able to write it down and feed in black and white is very empowering for the students.
Hmm.
Um, and I don't know much about teaching or business, but this was really interesting. Um, and it was really interesting to see, um, like, how complex this business is and like all the different parts, like especially with Rick's business, like, yeah, like you were saying, John, like, just the HR part, like goes down and makes like a web and like it goes through all the different parts of like the entire business, like training everyone, like that impacts all the different segments. Um, and so, yeah, it's just, it's really complex, but it's really interesting.
Excellent, well, you're, Rachel, you're invited to come back to the next one. Uh, well, you, you always were, you, I just wanna reiterate that. And, uh, and my gratitude for you joining us and thanks, please, for bringing your daughter. So for me, what stood out is that, one, uh, prudence is about action, right? And so much of the time we think about it in terms of, especially on the back of, uh, the, the Module Five groundwork session that Rebecca led, this idea of, of growing in virtue, right? And it's about changing our minds. Uh, and to, the other thing is, is to Ra- to Rachel's point, right? Like, the dignity of the human person, right? The, 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 kind of the, the linchpin, um, the keystone for Catholic social thought, right? Is, is, is permeates everything that we do. And so when, when we're really putting others first, when we're really approaching, uh, to serve the others is when, when we are blessed. You know, that's, that's, I think, um, one of my big takeaways. And so I, I, my internal eternal gratitude, Rick, thank you for helping with this session. You really did make it amazing. And all of you, thank you for coming on this Tuesday after a holiday weekend. And, um, we are having another one of these, as always, on the first Tuesday of the month, groundwork sessions. Next month, Module Seven, we'll be digging in to Lean Startup, which is, uh, kind of perfectly on the back of the business model canvas for learn, build, measure, repeat, right? And so we're constantly learning, constantly iterating. In fact, shameless plug, we have begun, some of you, well, two things I wanted to talk about. Some of you may have noticed, you got invited to a thing called Basecamp. And Basecamp is a project management tool, but it also, we're using it, uh, as a way to build community outside of these events. So if you're, if you've been on there, uh, thank you for doing that. Those of you that have introduced yourselves, that's extremely helpful for creating community, letting everybody know where you are. So if you're curious about that and wanna maybe have a guided tour, just let me know, I'd be happy to help you with that. And the other thing that we're very excited to announce, that we have launched in earnest our Instagram account. So we'd love to connect with you over there. Uh, it's our way of marketing, our way of building a channel to those folks that need to hear about Seed, that we would love to add to the community. So if you are on Instagram, we'd love to follow you and have you follow us and interact with our posts. We are Seed Program, so at C E D E Program, Seed Program on Instagram. And we're sharing lots of little clips, especially this one will be next, I'm sure. Very soon you might see your smiling face on Instagram, so thank you so much for that. And we'd love to have you join us and help us spread the word about the Catholic entrepreneurship and design experience, of which you are an essential partner. So thank you so much, and have a great night. We'd love to, we'd love to see you again. If you need anything, let us know. God bless.